Rich, Rich, do you mind, did you use that water?
You need it? Oh yeah, sure.
Okay, um, hey Kathy? Well, it's here. Did you make a note of it? Seven thirty, okay. And it's here.
Feels different from this angle, right?
Good evening, everyone. We are going to start our business meeting, public session. Before we do that, I'd like to invite everyone to please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. There is something not on the agenda that Mr. Lochner just told me about, Ms. Lochner. If you could, please. I think you're gonna have to make the adjustment before, uh...
Okay, I apologize. I apologize. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is obviously a special evening. We actually have a few presentations that we'd like to make this evening, but before we do, we thought we would just spend a few moments honoring two very, very special people who are leaving us as board members. I would like to say personally that they have been great friends of mine and great supporters over the last five years, that I've been honored to be the superintendent. But Mr. Feliciano, our board president, this is his last meeting. And Ms. Paula Moore, who was the first vice president, it is her last meeting. That's not to say they hopefully will run again in the future, who knows? But this now is a very, kind of a bittersweet moment. So it is a time for us to thank them for their service. I believe it has been nine years, which is a tremendous run for Board of Education. They are volunteers. Since, as I said, since I've been superintendent, their dedication is really incredible. They put in a tremendous amount of hours, not just here at meetings, but they also, behind the scenes, they do a tremendous amount of reading. They also attend other meetings in reference to being a Board of Education member. They also go to so many, you probably have seen them at so many different events, concerts and plays, musicals, also, you know, things during the day that take place with the elementary schools, middle and high school. They have been completely dedicated to the Brentwood community. And I think they are, they deserve, first of all, our thanks and our praise for their efforts. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna end there. I'm actually going to pass it over to Board Trustee, the second vice president, Maria Gonzalez Prescott, who also would like to say a few words. And we do have a couple of plaques that we would like to present to the board members.
Yes, so I am reading a resolution. You know, one of the many last resolutions that we'll have together. So I'm gonna read it. Whereas Robert Feliciano served on the Brentwood Union Free School District Board of Education, and whereas throughout his tenure with the Board of Education, Robert Feliciano has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to further the best interests of the Brentwood schools. And whereas Robert Feliciano has dedicated an immersible amount of time and energy working to lead Brentwood School District to achieve its place of excellence. And whereas by this resolution, the Board of Education wishes to formally acknowledge its appreciation to Robert Feliciano for his tireless service to the Brentwood school community. Now therefore, the resolved that the Board of Education hereby expresses its gratitude to Robert Feliciano for his contribution as a board member of the district. And via further resolved, that the Board of Education extends its best wishes to Robert Feliciano for his future pursuit and endeavors. So I will do a resolution for Ms. Paula Moore. And the resolution states, whereas Paula Moore served on the Brentwood Union Free School District Board of Education, and whereas throughout her tenure with the Board of Education, Paula Moore has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to further the best interests of the Brentwood schools. And whereas Paula Moore has dedicated an immersible amount of time and energy working to lead the Brentwood School Districts to achieve its place of excellence. And whereas by this resolution, the Board of Education wishes to formally acknowledge its appreciation to Paula Moore for her tireless service to the Brentwood community, school community. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Education hereby expresses its gratitude to Paula Moore for her contribution as a board member of the district. And it is to be resolved that the Board of Education extends its best wishes to Paula Moore and her future pursuit and endeavors. Congratulations.
I just thank you so much, Maria. And it's, there was, I guess, a reason why Rich wouldn't tell me what it was that they were doing. He just said, "Throw the ball to me, Rob," and I, and I got this. I didn't realize he was a team member. Thank you from the bottom of my heart to all of the board members. And Maria, especially you, because I kind of feel that you were, had a lot to do with putting all this together. Ms. Lochner, I truly enjoyed the relationship that we have, and I know that we will continue to have a wonderful relationship after. I have a prepared statement that I'll read at the end of all of this. Because I have to come prepared. This is what I have to do, alright? But from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. And Paula, it's been a trip, alright? So, thank you to everybody.
Well, if I could say, it has been a blast. And you know what? I failed to say before that I've actually been friends with Mr. Feliciano and Ms. Moore long before I became superintendent. Ms. Moore was a big supporter of mine when I was the high school principal. And for that, I'm very grateful. She has always been kind and supportive of me long before I became superintendent and has helped my career tremendously. And for that, I am very grateful. And also, Mr. Feliciano, we were friends long before. We were confidants long before I became superintendent, only because Mr. Feliciano does do his homework. And he always came prepared. And he would call me if there are any issues that needed to be clarified. He would call me as high school principal and we'd spend an hour or two on the phone or we'd meet and, you know, because he really wants to learn, he always wanted to learn about the issues and learn how best to tackle the issues. And that's one of the things I can honestly say about Mr. Feliciano, that he really does, you know, do his homework. And he really researches problems and he tries to come up with the best solutions. And it's been an honor to work with both Ms. Moore and Mr. Feliciano. I think actually they deserve a standing ovation, if we could give them a standing ovation later.
Thank you so much. Ms. Moore, I know this was, I had this planned for the end of the night, but there's no reason why I couldn't read my statement now. If you'd like to go before me, I know that you wanted to say a couple of things. Let's just do it now and that would be great. I mean, if you're okay with that.
I'd rather go before you. I don't like to speak after you.
Oh, so that's what I'm saying. So if you'd like to go now, that's, that is...
First of all, I would like to thank my supporters over these past nine years. And even the people that didn't support me, because some of them supported me during those nine years. So I am grateful for that. And I am humbled to be able, to have been able to serve my community. And I worked for the school district for almost thirty years. I served on the board for nine years. So I believe Brentwood is in my DNA. I really do. I'd also like to say the things that, this board has done so many good things. You know, we've had our ups and downs, but in the end, we accomplished a lot. A lot. One of the things that I am most proud of is MBK. We lost the lawsuit, you know, regarding our foundation aid, but we kept up the fight. We didn't stop. And Albany heard us. I don't know if the stars are all aligned, but we got our money. The other thing that I am most proud of are the appointments of Mr. Lochner as superintendent and his team. I call it the dream team.
It is.
It is the dream team. Wanda Ortiz, Ann Palmer, and Rhonda Young. And most of all, Stacy O'Connor. Because what she has done was kept this district in good financial standing. And that is most important. We have, I don't think we've ever had been in financial distress since I've been here. Not going with, and I don't think, as long as Stacy's here, we never, we will never be in financial distress. So I lead Brentwood in a good, in a good way. And I am very proud of that. And I don't feel like I didn't win the election. What I won was something bigger than that. And that was to keep Brentwood in a good way, leaving the district in a big way, in a good way. And I'm sure it will continue to be that way. But I do have to say again, with this dream team, that is what I am most proud of. The appointments that we've made. And of course, the appointment of Rich Lochner. Because he is the best. I think he spends more time in Brentwood than he does in his home district.
I don't even know my home district.
But this has been a good board. It really has been. A very, very good board. And that I am proud of. And thank you very much for your support. And as I said, even those that didn't support me, some did in the past, they didn't this time, but that's okay, you know? But we all are working for the good of the district. So that I am just very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. So again, I did come with a prepared statement that I was going to read at the end of tonight's meeting. But, you know, as we know, things change and you just gotta go with it. So this is the statement that I was going to read later on. It says, "Dear Brentwood community, during the past nine years, Paula Moore and I have had the honor of representing the Brentwood School District community as Board of Education trustees. Tonight is the last of many Board of Education meetings we have participated in with many colleagues, but none more than with each other. To say it mildly, mildly, this has been quite a journey. Along with fighting for the best possible care and education for our children, there was always much more work at hand. Among the primary goals set forth in serving as trustee, I wanted to properly represent and empower the residents of the Brentwood School District. Together, we accomplished this in an unprecedented fashion and in a way in which each member of this board and community should be proud of. The main ingredients needed were tenacity, courage, and commitment. We fought against the approved Hartland Development Project when zero consideration was given to the impact that approximately eight thousand more students coming out of nine thousand new apartments would have on our district. We fought for foundation aid when we recognized that we would never be able to provide for the needs of our children without additional funding. We fought against the decision to allow for the Omni Waste Transfer Station to open in one of our residential neighborhoods, identifying that this facility would undoubtedly have a negative impact on the quality of life for everyone in Brentwood. In the face of adversity, we stood firm and unanimously voted to empower our general counsel attorneys to bring forth litigation that gave this community a voice that has long been ignored. In each of these matters, Brentwood provided unwavering leadership of a multitude of civic school and community organizations and members. The actions listed above exemplify what a Board of Education, one of the most local forms of government, can accomplish when there is a will to do so. We were determined, yes we could, yes we did. Empowerment comes in many colors, one of which is creating a system that is fair, equitable, and accountable. For staff members that endured tremendous workplace hardships during years past, relief was found in this manner. This board supported personal assessment standards in which an employee's success or failure was determined by their individual job performance instead of a system largely based on personal conflict, animosity, or vindictiveness, in which predetermined outcomes were commonplace. There is no doubt that our commitment to these principles positively changed the district workplace culture. We stood for and encouraged fair labor negotiations to be exclusively handled by our school labor attorneys as leaders of the district's negotiating team. Once contracts were settled, the feedback received from employee negotiating teams was always positive. Although controversial at the time, a majority of the board members even supported and extended this approach when it came time to negotiation, to negotiating the teachers' union contract. As Board of Education president, I rejected the invitation to negotiate this contract in exchange for a political advantage as done in years past. Making a trade that would circumvent a form that allowed for transparent and fair negotiations led by our labor council was never tempting or appealing to me. At the end of this new, quote, "new" process, we successfully executed and updated, and updated and fair contract for both parties that included the removal of an, quote, "I slip town salary averaging provision." On another topic, the time spent in the development of fair hiring practices has been a great investment for the Brentwood School District community. As many are aware, this topic has been largely, has been regularly brought forth over the years during many board business meetings. Although the discussion was at times controversial, there was always agreement that policy changes were desperately needed. Again, we should be proud of the work done improving the prospects of resident and alumni applicants for teaching positions in our district. Although there is still much room for improvement, the foundation upon which to build a qualified and diverse educational staff is set. Board Policy 9240 is a true testament to the spirit of cooperation on behalf of the board and central administrators needed to make any improvements. Finally, thank you to the central administrative team, Rich, Rhonda, Stacy, Ann, and Wanda. Empowerment in a school district must include central administrative team. Our role as board members must include an alignment of mission with all of you in order to successfully care for and educate the children of our community. I hope that in retrospect, you're able to reflect on this and agree that this mission was accomplished. Your service to our community is second to none. As mentioned so many times before, you are an all-star team. And as an FYI, I will be nominating you to the School District Administrators Hall of Fame. You can laugh.
That is funny. I was gonna say, I didn't, I don't know such a thing, but, okay.
We are starting one now, okay? To my colleagues and future board member, Board of Education members, I wish you wisdom. You are left with a well-planned and well-funded roadmap that allows for the renewal of our district during the next few years. The decisions you make have the power to help or hurt the community you call home. Your fiduciary responsibilities, how you handle money, will impact generations to come. Remember that our economy runs in cycles. And although we are currently in good financial standing, there will surely be hard economic times coming. Most important and above all else, please keep in mind where your loyalty should and should not be. To the board members and school district community who supported and allowed me to lead as the Board of Education president during the past five years, thank you for the trust you have placed in me. It was a truly humbling experience. I believe we did good. To the students who are our inspiration, may God shower his blessings on you always. Thank you very much. All right, where do we go from here? Mr. Lochner, and thank you again to everyone, really. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. I know that it's been interesting. We've had our differences, but I do believe, like Ms. Moore said, that we all are here for the right reasons. So, thank you again. We're gonna continue with the special presentations. For the Nassau Suffolk School Board Association honors the Brentwood Board of Education. Mr. Lochner, I believe that that's yours?
Yes, it's really appropriate, but the NISBA, which is the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association, did want to recognize the Brentwood School District for their efforts as a board. They did recognize, in particular, the Brentwood School District for being an outstanding board. And they did send us a proclamation, which I'll have framed and will keep in the, will keep over at Central Administration in the public meeting room. And just quickly, it does include on the, on the presentation, on, I'm sorry, on the certificate, it does include a quote from Harry Chapin, and I think it does exemplify this particular board. And it says, "We all have the potential to move the world, and the world is ready to move." And I do appreciate the work that this board has done during my tenure, the last five years, and also under Mr. Feliciano as Board President and Ms. Moore as First Vice President. I do believe that they think that the world can be moved. And they, they did, I think, give all of their efforts towards moving the district forward in every possible way, not just financially, but academically, emotionally, and socially for the students. And it has been my pleasure to watch them. I do believe that they sincerely love this community. And that is why they initially ran, and that's why they served for nine years. So once again, thank you, thank you very much. And congratulations to the entire board for this recognition by the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association.
Thank you. Now to the next item of business, and this is gonna be a really, really fun one. Mr. Lochner, we have the cast of Historias para ser contadas here with us. I'm not sure, okay?
They're moving into position as we speak. Yes, we're going to have a presentation. And Ms. Ribeiro, I guess you're going to lead the way. And we are so thrilled to have many of the cast members here with us this evening.
Hello, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, here with us tonight and those of you at home. Chambérevo, Bon Nuit, Bon Anote, Bon Noite, y Buenas Noches. My name is Paula Ribeiro, the Coordinator of Bilingual and E&amp;L Instruction. I stand here beside my Assistant Coordinator of Bilingual and E&amp;L Instruction, Maria Mores, and our bilingual E&amp;L High School Department Chairperson, Mary Alice Gans. For over ten years, we have had a dream, it's been the dream to have a Spanish play here in Brentwood. It was a long, challenging journey, but I'm happy to say it has finally come true. Tonight, we would like to present to you Brentwood School District's first-ever Spanish theater company, Compañía de Teatro El Mundo de los Sueños, that are here this evening.
Wow.
These young high school bilingual students have studied, practiced, and overcome some fears of speaking in front of an audience. They performed Historias para ser contadas for our students, our families, and our community. In order for this all to be possible, it took a community.
We would like to thank, oh my goodness, can I take that off? Sorry. We would like to thank Margarita Espada and Teatro Yerba Bruja for the dedication and perseverance, and also honor our students by having them, she honored our students by having them open the Puerto Rican Parade, their parade. We thank the Board of Education who vehemently supported us in our vision. We are fortunate to have Board Member Julia Burgos help us cut the ribbon to celebrate the opening night. It was really an exciting evening. We would like to thank our teachers who spent many, many afternoons cheering on our students and helping them memorize their lines and face the challenges head-on. We celebrate Ivan Perez, Dina Hernandez, I mean, Dina Grisales, Xenia Paravallas, and Lilia Contreras. And we also thank, thanked Angel Perez, Coordinator of Performing and Fine Arts, for your guidance, teaching us the ropes, and helping us lean on you along the way. We also thank Fran Rizudo, Senior Office Assistant, and Jennifer Yeznik, High School Office Assistant, for handling all our crazy last-minute requests. It was a partnership among the Board of Education, different departments, administrators, teachers, and most importantly, the students. I would like to announce the names of these bright, talented actors and production crew. It's only the beginning, and we're so excited to see what you'll do next.
So we have Studio Blanco y Negro.
Okay. Lady Santiago, Kelvin Ventura, Juan Hernandez Zalada, Mayeli Camero, Anthony Aguilar Romero.
El hombre que se convirtió en perro.
Johnson Gallegos, Mark Persriasco, Wilmar Rodriguez, Eileen Eugenio, Mackenzie Agulo.
El caballo que era bien bonito.
Kelvin Ventura, Brandon Santa Maria, Rebecca Hernandez, Anthony Aguilar Romero, Jose Potillo, Emerson Peña.
Y después nuestros asistentes de dirección, our production crew.
Tatiana Ramirez, Jocelyn Ariola, Jocelyn Lorenzano, Christian Escobar, Yaredi Benicourt, Jessica Hernandez. Jessica Hernandez. We are so proud of you. What an amazing job you did.
So, while you're up there taking pictures, I am going to read a certificate of recognition from the Board of Education. This certificate is presented to the cast and crew of Historias para ser contadas for the dedication, discipline, and well-deserved success on an outstanding performance, signed by Mr. Loscher, Superintendent of Schools, and Robert Feliciano on behalf of the Board of Education. Congratulations again, and I think, I think it's picture time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's the way we go over that way. I didn't, I wasn't sure if he could get that way. You know what? I wasn't sure if he could get down that way. I apologize, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, I was just informed that we have just a huge personality person in our district, in the audience, and she just happens to be one of our, just an incredible, incredible teacher, incredible asset to this district, is here with us, and I'm going to ask her to stand, Ms. Mary Alice Gans. For those, for those that don't know, Ms. Gans is going to be retiring, and she leaves us with, how many years of service?
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two years of service. Just an incredible human being, credible asset to this district and to each one of those students and children who've had the pleasure of knowing her and just along the way. Really, really exemplify what, what Brentwood is about in terms of our staff. Mr. Loscher, if you...
Wait, I'm not, we're not finished.
Oh, we're not done yet.
We're not finished. Yeah, it's been my pleasure to work with Mary Alice for lots of years together, and she is, as you said, Mr. Feliciano, just an incredible woman. She is a beautiful person who loves our kids and has dedicated her life in incredible amount of time and effort she puts in behind the scenes. She's not out there in front, doesn't really want any glory for herself, but it has been my pleasure to work with her and see how much she does for the kids of Brentwood School District. Day in and day out, she pours her heart and soul into her job, and it has been, I'm actually a better person for knowing Mary Alice. I think she is one of these people that when you get to know her, you, you really do see someone who is genuinely good and genuinely kind and loving. And it has been my pleasure to work with her. I think she's just a tremendous administrator. As I said, that she just gives of herself like no one else, and it has been a pleasure. I'm going to miss you terribly. I think the high school is going to miss you terribly, and I think the school, the kids too, who you, as I've said, you've given everything to the, to the high school kids. You absolutely love all of the high school kids, but the bilingual, the E&amp;L, and the SIF students, you have particularly looked out for since you began your career here. And there are thousands and thousands and thousands of kids who are better off for knowing you, Ms. Gans. Yes, I know, you always do it for the kids.
Thank you.
I'm proud of everyone, and grateful to have had this opportunity to work in Brentwood with this amount of time, and expect it to be at all, and it's been so many years, and I hope it gradually, gradually will work in Brentwood, and I couldn't possibly put it over.
Yeah, we'll, we'll still see Mary Alice.
Thank you. So, the next A4 Student Liaisons, Priscilla de Jesus and Mauricio Diaz. Can we have the microphone adjusted?
Hello? There we go. Hello and good evening, everyone. For one last time, my name is Mauricio Diaz, and I am the raw senior class president.
And my name is Priscilla de Jesus, and I am the raw student council president.
We are your Class of 2022 Student Liaisons, and we are here tonight to present our findings.
This has been quite an eventful year. We started the year with high hopes and high fears of what laid ahead. We couldn't say with any type of certainty where the pandemic would take us, but nonetheless, our district and community made a collective effort to do our best.
At our first board meeting, we addressed the dress code protest that was initiated in the high school. The student body was pleased to know our voices and thoughts were heard. This was the start of a new dynamic between the administrative team, parents, and the student body.
The administrative team in the high school proceeded to implement what we now refer to as our Town Hall Meetings. These meetings take place and will continue to take place once a month. These serve as a collaborative environment for students to voice their opinions on school affairs and generally remain informed.
Thanks to these Town Hall Meetings, we have since addressed many concerns over school lunches and COVID restrictions, and have also improved communications between administration and students. Students were also given detailed information about what to expect throughout our final months of school and the school year to follow. We've even been offered exclusive glimpses as to constructions that will start in the high school and plans for expanding our course offerings.
Though our term began late and was even disrupted by the global pandemic, we are truly honored to have served as the Student Liaison for the Class of 2022. We are grateful for the experience we've garnered and hope this is a mere start to a more collaborative future in Brentwood.
Before we say our final goodbyes, we wanted to reflect on our experiences in Brentwood. Thirteen short years ago, our parents entered the administration building to enroll us in the Brentwood School District. These streets and hallways have watched us grow into the creative, caring, and intelligent individuals you see here today.
Since our days in kindergarten, we have felt so much love and joy, and though no one ever feels prepared to confront the world we will soon step into, we know that thanks to Brentwood's lessons and advice, there is no struggle or hardship we can't tackle.
We want to thank our teachers, parents, administrators, and friends for making our upbringing so magical that saying goodbye is this difficult.
To the board, we thank you for allowing us to serve as the Student Liaisons. This has been one of our greatest honors, and we hope you will never stop working to give Brentwood, to give future Brentwood students the lessons to tackle this intimidating and exciting world.
With that, we say our final goodbyes. Brentwood High School, Class of 2022 Student Liaisons, signing off.
Can we say thank you to them? Like, I know we just clap, but really, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We really do thank you for being spokespersons for your class. We thank you for the courage you've exhibited, and we thank you for what we know holds in your future, a really bright future, and we ask you to come back, visit us often, and don't forget about us. Thank you very much.
They, they were really, you guys were just terrific Student Liaisons. We actually reinstituted it this year, and we could not ask for better representatives. You guys are really phenomenal. Just, just your, your whole presentation is wonderful and uplifting and, and insightful, and it has helped tremendously, so thank you. It's really been terrific.
It came out, out, all decked out and...
I know, and I love that.
Take a picture.
What a great, we can take a picture. Yeah, let's take a picture with us. Well, you know what? I'm going to ask if you guys come up here. How about that? If you guys come up here, it'll be a little easier.
Right in front of the dais?
Okay. Can we get through there? Yeah, is it, is there room over there?
We would like to...
Can we get through there?
I think so. Yeah, is it, is there room over there?
Thank you.
You guys are really...
Thank you.
Priscilla and Mauricio, just so you know, I'm going to be ending tonight's meeting exactly the way you did, and it's going to be Robert Feliciano and Paula Moore signing off, okay? I just love that, all right?
That was cute.
Could you just ask if there are any other students that were going to be recognized for their participation in any...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Before we move on, are there any other students that are here this evening? They might have been in the Addams Family, the Orchestra, Scamia Band. The reason being, the reason I'm saying that, there was some miscommunication, and there were other organizations that may have been recognized this evening. So, is there anybody from any of those other organizations? Mauricio, okay. Now, for, what, what, which one, Mauricio? Orchestra, okay. Well, congratulations, Mauricio was in our orchestra, and I know that you were recognized. What was the, you know, what level did you get to? Was it, you know, tell me why. I don't have it in front of me here, but the orchestra we were going to recognize for...
I think we shared that.
Oh, that's right. Thank you, Mauricio, for... So, this was for the Addams Family?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, Mauricio was in the pit, and if anybody had an opportunity to see the Addams Family, it was flat-out great. And the orchestra was recognized a few weeks back by the Teeny Awards, which is the town of Islip gets together all 12 school districts, that's including St. John the Baptist, and they actually vote on who wins different awards, and our orchestra was recognized for their outstanding performance. Because from what I understand, the, the Addams Family is not an easy score. It's actually very difficult. And Mauricio, I remember you in the pit. It was just a fabulous, fabulous show. So, how appropriate is this? Congratulations, Mauricio.
Thank you so much, Mr. Loscher. So, we are going to go to A5, and I don't have anything here in terms of questions from the audience on agenda items. We will be moving then to the consent agenda. Be resolved that the following items be approved, B1A through B1M. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Gonzalez Prescott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Be resolved that the following items be approved, B2A through B2X. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Burgos. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Sephiri. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstentions?
One abstention. Trustee Holder. Motion is carried. Be resolved that the following items be approved, C1A and C1B. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Gonzalez Prescott. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Felix. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. We're going to the D items. D1A, appointments, resignations, and leaves of certificated personnel as proposed on the agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Felix. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. D1B, appointments, resignations, and leaves non-certificated personnel as proposed on the agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sephiri. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Burgos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstentions?
So moved.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Adios.
I'm sorry, I forgot to announce that this was the moment to leave, but I figured that school was over for you guys, and you guys just wanted to, you know...
Stay up late.
They stay up late, exactly. For those in the audience who can't see what's happening, we are having the student body leave. Okay. So, we're going to continue with D1C, settlement agreement as proposed on our agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sephiri. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Holder Daniel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. D1D, stipulation of agreement as proposed on our agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Gonzalez Prescott. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Felix. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. D1E, creation of senior cook positions. That's two senior cook positions, as proposed on the agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Moore. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Gonzalez Prescott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved.
E...
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So, moved.
Aye.
Bye, thank you.
Adios.
I'm sorry, I forgot to announce that this was the moment to leave, but I figured that school was over for you guys, and you guys just wanted to, you know?
Stay up late.
They stay up late, exactly. For those in the audience who can't see what's happening, we are having the student body leave. Okay. So, we're gonna continue with D1C, settlement agreement as proposed on our agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sefiri. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Holder Daniel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So, moved. D1D, stipulation of agreement as proposed on our agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Gonzalez Prescott. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Felix. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So, moved. D1E, creation of senior cook positions. That's two senior cook positions as proposed on the agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Moore. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Gonzalez Prescott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So, moved. E1A, the student enrollment figures as proposed on the agenda, miscellaneous items is F15, old and new business. Mr. Lochner, this one is all for you.
Okay. And you know what? I would like to thank Mr. Feliciano, because this was Mr. Feliciano's brainchild a few years ba-, a few years, yeah, I guess a few years back, the monthly happenings, and it's really been, become a part of the meeting that I look forward to. I don't know if everybody else does, but I certainly do. So, first, we have our high school graduation is this Friday evening. It begins at 4:45 out on the football field. We expect over, it's probably between 12 and 1,300 graduates, which is a really nice graduating class. Pray for good weather. I think that right now, it's actually partly cloudy, which I think is really kind of the perfect weather. So, please come on out if you can. It promises to be just a beautiful evening. It's actually our first single graduation in three years. The last two years, we've, obviously, because of COVID, we had to break it up. Our first year was 12 graduations, and then last year was four graduations. So, we're back to the one graduation. I also wanna thank all of our elementary schools and middle schools, the Moving Up ceremonies, which I've had the opportunity to attend quite a few, were absolutely beautiful. And today, I actually attended Northeast. It was just really a beautiful ceremony. And I really wanna thank all of the principals, assistant principals, and teachers who put quite a great deal of effort into those ceremonies. They really are beautiful, and really does signify a big part of kids' lives, and it was great to see so many parents who come out and enjoy those ceremonies as well. So, I wanna thank everybody involved with that, with those ceremonies. So, on Saturday, June 11th, the Office of Math and Science, and in collaboration with the principals and consultants, hosted our very first kindergarten STEAM extravaganza, which included over 20 booths that engaged students in magic shows, science experiments, technology exhibitions, arts and crafts, music and song. Today, in the public meeting room, the Office of Language Arts hosted the Books to Home event. Children and their families were able to shop for free books to enjoy during the summer month. Once again, we'd like to thank the generosity of our Brentwood employees and the book fairies for their donation of beautiful new books for children of all ages. Our proud Brentwood graduates participated in the third annual running of Destination, College, and Career on Monday, June 13th and Tuesday, June 14th. And again, I'd like to actually thank the board. There were many members of the board who actually pushed for that to begin a few years back, and that's also become a tradition that will live on for quite a few years. So, like the march, they will take on graduation day. Our students walked the elementary school hallways in their cap and gowns as a symbol of their hard work and determination. An aerial view of the event will come out in the Brentwood Bulletin Graduation Edition and on our Facebook page. Okay, actually, this is about the ceremony this Friday evening. Kudos to the elementary, I'm sorry, I, you know what? I didn't read it beforehand, and I see that everything I just mentioned in terms of the high school graduations and the Moving Up ceremonies is mentioned here. And I also wanna say that the UPK also had some beautiful Moving Up ceremonies as well, Shepherd's Gate and Family Service League, that is. And this year's Shepherd's Gate celebrated 15 years and awarded their first UPK class of high school students with $250 scholarship. So, they began 15 years ago, and their first kids through the program were senior graduates. Actually, it really was a beautiful moment. On Monday, June 27th, we kicked off our summer enrichment programs with our Jump Start to Grade One, League of Stars, and our K5 bilingual programs. There are still openings for all of our summer programs. Brentwood, parents can find the application to all offerings on the district website. You've heard me mention, you know, every single month for the last three, four, five months, as well as out on the website. We have really a whole host of summer programs, and I really encourage parents to go to the website, sign your sons and daughters up. They're anywhere from three-week to six-week programs. Ready, Set, Grow, Brentwood High School teacher, Dr. Rebecca Grella, in collaboration with Assistant Superintendent of Business Stacy O'Connor and Assistant Superintendent of Special Services Rhonda Young, secured a Project C grant from National Grid in the amount of $68,800. This grant award will be used to transform a courtyard at the freshman center into an outdoor learning lab. The Project Grow Outdoor Learning Laboratory will serve our special needs population at the French, freshman center, as well as all other students enrolled in science and biology. The lab will work to unite the Science Buddies Program with our freshman center and high school, and encourage partnerships and opportunities for all of our students with disabilities. So, congratulations on securing that grant.
We now move to, we now move to the community comments, G1B. I will ask Evelyn Ortiz, if she's here, if you can come to the mic.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanna say first, thank you for all that you do. I'm a Brentwood alumni. I'm also a Brentwood resident and a homeowner currently, and I just had some questions in regards to the Brentwood Library. I've been spending a lot of time there recently tutoring a student, and they're telling me that there is no paid tutoring at, at the library, and I was just curious as to why. And also, I was curious about the AC conditions in the library, because it's extremely hot. So, and there's, like, designated areas where people can sit, and I feel like I'm given a hard time when I go there.
Ms. Ortiz, so, the library has affiliation with the school district, and it's kind of, kind of a weird one to explain, so I won't do that. But it's governed by its own board.
Okay.
And what you might wanna do is look into seeing when they meet, and I do believe that they may meet on a monthly basis.
Okay.
I believe, yes, I'm unfamiliar with when they meet, but, but I think it might be on a monthly basis. But they have their own board of trustees, and those, I believe, are where, that's where I believe that you can bring these issues up and have them resolved.
Okay. I wasn't sure. And then, I had another question in regards to special ed to the student that I'm tutoring. Was told, the parent had told me that the teacher told him that she doesn't have time to basically cater to him, that she has too many students in her classroom, and she's recommending retention for this student. And just by working with him, I don't believe that he needs retention. So, I'm just wondering, what are the protocols for retention, for special ed, for RTI? This scholar doesn't have RTI. He's not in the process, so I'm just curious, because the parent seems like she doesn't know what's going on.
Ms. Ortiz, if I can just, if I can point you to our Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, Ms. Rhonda Young, if you can just stand, just, there you go. That would be the person who you could probably give the details to in terms of student name, what you've experienced, and everything that your concern is. Mr. Lochner, if you have anything to add?
A couple of things. First of all, thank you, Ms. Ortiz, for, you know, for really tutoring one of our kids. I think that's outstanding. Thank you. Thank you for that. And also, thank you for looking out for him, because, you know, we need, we need people to speak up. And certainly, Ms. Young will help out in terms of what you believe to be the case. I mean, we certainly wanna listen to what a tutor says. And when did you graduate, Ms. Ortiz?
2009.
Okay, I thought so. Okay. Well, it's great to see you, and we're so glad you're back with us. Also, in terms of, the Brentwood Public Library, I did hear they were experiencing the same issues that we're having, and that is the air conditioning. They're, I've heard that they're looking for, he can run off, he can run up, we can get him on camera. Oh my God, how precious is that?
Oh my God.
Now, you have to pick him up.
Now, you have to pick him up.
Wave, exactly. Oh, that is wonderful. So, you know, I did hear that they, they're experiencing the same problem getting the parts to their air conditioner. Terms of the being paid as a tutor, this actually, do you remember when this came up, Mr. Feliciano, about, about three or four or five years ago, there is an issue with tutors onsite at the library being paid. But that's something, again, I think that was a Brentwood Public Library thing. I'm not sure that had anything to do with us. So, that is why Mr. Feliciano's right. I'd probably approach the board about that. All right, we started him off.
These were dying to run around.
So, thank you again, Ms. Ortiz. And like I said, if you could speak with Ms. Young, we can find out what's up with this youngster here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have Desiree Thomas.
No, you didn't. You think you did.
Oh, no. All right, maybe not. All right, well, hello, everybody. This thing is like very high for short people. But I actually just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, boy.
For letting me say something today. It's really wild when you actually come to these meetings, and you see that we're the biggest district, and it's like no one there, but that's another story. But I actually just wanted to say that my son, Malachi, actually was able to get the skateboarding jamboree, the first one at East Middle School today. But unfortunately, there was only him there, because the district only put it out like the day beforehand, and he worked really hard to actually get it done. And I just wanted to see if there was anything that you guys could do to support him, because he's actually part of getting the first skate park done in Brentwood for our, for our youth. And I just wanted to see if you guys could actually support us in getting some marketing going for two events that we have going on with Phil Ramos, who actually is also supporting us, and a community event that we have coming up, since he was skating today by himself with Mr. Salinger.
What's your son's name again?
Malachi Rivera. He's right here. And so, I mean, he did have fun today, but, you know, for the work that he, you know, put into it, I think that he deserves it, and I think the kids also deserve it, you know, because they only got 24-hour notice, and a lot of the kids didn't know about it. And I did send a message to you, Mr. Lochner, so.
When did you send a message, Ms. Thomas? Just, I haven't even heard about it till you're telling me now.
Wow, serious. All right, well, I've been sending emails like wild. I sent one to you. I sent one to Mr. Mohammed. I was speaking to Mr. McGinn as well. And Mr. McGinn, Mr. Salinger sent me a message last week saying that he knew that it was happening. So, I'm just not sure, but I just would appreciate if we could work on some solutions on how we could actually get the kids together and have like a district-wide, because this is a big deal for us.
Yeah, no, I'm so glad, you know, I'm sorry that I didn't know about it, because I certainly would have put it out on Parent Square. I presume East Middle School put it out on Parent Square. But we'll do something, you know, for Malachi, and I think it's great that he, I know he's involved in getting the skate park up and running.
Yes.
So, we'll get something. As you know, I've talked to Malachi. I think it's a great idea. I love that he was so into it.
Yes, yeah, but it's important to get the kids. So, you know, we just wanna make sure that the school district is as supportive as everyone else, and we appreciate that. And we already have a permit for August 28th already set, so we would appreciate it if the school district would support him in that, because I know that it does wonders for the, for the community, and it also will do wonders for us. So, I would appreciate that. I don't know what we need to do to make that happen, but I would appreciate.
What is the permit for on August 2?
So, the permit is actually for a block party, but the skate community is in support of it, because we're gonna be doing a skate rollout. So, a lot of the local skate communities will be involved. You know, the local officials who are participating in it will be involved, and hopefully, the kids that were rallying and stuff, you know, it's just, we just wanna make it a cohesive thing with everyone, so.
And will this be, I'm sorry to interrupt, is this going to be at Roberto Clemente or what?
It's, it's gonna be on that block in front of Roberto Clemente, but.
Broadway or the Noble?
On Noble, the Noble part, yeah. So, I can, I don't know how this works. I don't know if I send it, or, I just wanted to see if there was a way that we can get that maybe approved, and like how I go about doing that.
If you have a flyer, you can send it.
Send it to you.
Yeah, send it to me, Ms. Thomas, but give me a call also, you know, at least a week or two. Call the office, you know, rather than just email.
Okay.
I'll make sure I get it.
Okay, who should I speak to when I call the office?
You'll speak to Nadine.
Nadine?
Yeah, she's my secretary.
Okay, so I'll call Nadine and email you.
Yes.
All right.
Definitely give me a call first.
Okay, but it is okay, though, right? All right. We'll send the flyer.
And the flyer, yes.
I'll send them out to everyone, and she knows. We'll send them out to everyone, but I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Yes, 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 all right.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Malachi.
See you, Malachi.
Thank you. So, we have, we have Mr. Joe Fritz.
Good evening, Joe Fritz, Brentwood resident. At this point, I'd like to thank Mr. Feliciano and Ms. Moore for their service again. I do believe that the contributions made by school board members are an important aspect to the Brentwood community, and it's important that you also be on this side of the podium the next time the school board meets. I say this with a great deal of happiness, because I worked with Paula and I worked with Robert when they first were running for the school board. I've worked with them on many occasions. In fact, I remember Paula was complaining about the walking tour, which we've got of the Brentwood community. I, I don't take it lightly. I think it's important to get out there and press the flesh. What I'd also like to congratulate is the Class of 2022. While I may not be the oldest living Brentwood graduate, I'm probably the oldest Brentwood graduate in this room right now. I graduated 60 years ago in 1962, and unfortunately, Mr. Lochner, not to do a rain dance, but it rained when we graduated. We had to come into the, to the Ross Auditorium from the football field when it started to pour. So, I, I hope that you get better weather than we got. We did have a very, very important graduate. We had a person who, in my class, who was number one, went to MIT. So, we, you know, we, we had a very small class, 250 students, post-Webber generation, et cetera. We've come a long way, and I certainly, the whole nature of the Brentwood School District just went into a different direction, and it's a very positive one, and I want to see it move in a better direction. Now, to be a little critical, and Mr. Lochner, I hope that this isn't a strike of a bell too badly. Last month's school board meeting, I was taken to task by the superintendent for calling attention to our abysmal school graduation rate for June 2021 of 68%. I stated that we must acknowledge a problem in order to, in order to correct it. I asked that the graduation rate be improved by having a study done of what our problem was. Then, we must apply what was suggested. I suggested an external study composed of individuals who had worked with improving school statistics. Our superintendent's comment to me was rather terse, simply stated, he said, "I know nothing." I used a sister school district whose graduation rates were vastly different than ours, yet while smaller in size, its per capita income and demographic were comparable. They're very close in per capita income, and as far as percentages of the, of the community itself, it's extremely close. So, I don't, while it was, I acknowledged it was smaller, I certainly didn't want to, I thought it was very, very comparable. Our superintendent implied that I was comparing apples with oranges, when the school district's income and demographic were, were, that they when the school district's income and demographics were, that they weren't, not dissimilar, but very much the same. Of course, he was a little bit more visceral to me. The superintendent insinuated that I criticized the thirty-five hundred people who worked in the school district by my remarks. Now bear in mind, I'm a graduate of the school district. Sometimes you want to see things done, and in order to get things done, you have to, in effect, stamp your feet and scream a little bit. He forgets, you know, that this is an important aspect. Well, to laud individuals when the graduation rate needs vast improvement is not doing our district a service, but it's, as far as I'm concerned, is a disservice. You stated that when, what you do not see, that you don't see the world wearing rose-colored glasses. Well, I beg to differ, we need improvement. I think it might be different to see the distinction with more clarity if the graduation rate of statistic in, of sixty-eight percent occurred in Seville. If you were the superintendent of that community, would the residents clamor to your defense if I criticized the graduation rate? I don't think so. You would not be criticizing me for complaining about our schools as I did last month. The most obvious benefit of a higher graduation rate is higher incomes and higher home values. It's important to recognize that Brentwood home values are somewhat less than they are in other communities, and it could be one of the reasons. Higher home values will go up when graduation rates, and they also, the individuals get better jobs. Your increased offerings and adoption of a nine-period day, and at the abandonment of the ninth grade center, is an excellent start, I compliment you on this. I never realized how important it was that ninth graders have to have role models, and when they don't have them, chaos exists. But to learn the core of the problem, we must find someone, find out what the problem is and what could be done about it. As I stated, to know and not to do is not to go, not to know, excuse me. Let's get started. Mr. Lochner, good luck, I wish you the best.
So, Mr. Fritz, thank you so much for the comments, and I'm just going to just jump in here, and there is, there's no doubt that there's always room for improvement. We understand what the, what the district is faced with. But, you know, the example that you gave in terms of comparing, you know, sixty-eight percent graduation rate in a community like, like Seville, is, yes, is, would also, would also have to include, you know, a community and a demographic like what we have in Brentwood. So I am going to say that I believe, I believe that we are in a general sense, all of us, we're all in agreement. We're all in agreement, I hear what you've brought forth over the last three meetings, and there's no doubt, I believe that we're all in agreement that there's room for improvement. You mentioned two items that the board has considered, one has already, we've already taken action on, and that is the nine-period day at the high school. There's no doubt in my mind that that's going to give us tremendous results in terms of, results in terms of increasing the graduation rate, more course offerings, more availability, more lanes to use to graduate. And the other one is, you know, this idea and this thought of someday changing the ninth grade center to a sixth grade center. That's something that I believe that this board and the future board members, along with Mr. Lochner and his cabinet, will continue to discuss, but that one is to be seen and something to be discussed at some point in the future. I, I would like to end this meeting without allowing a chance for Mr. Lochner to rebut. It's, it's the end of the school year, we are celebrating the Class of 2022 on Friday, and why not end this on a good note? You're more than welcome to pick up this conversation. Just so that everybody knows, the July first reorg meeting has been, has been changed, and it was part of our agenda item. So the reorg meeting is going to be on July sixth, not July first, so that everybody's clear. And, you know, these conversations are going to continue, because I think that, like you said, they are worthwhile mentioning, and why not have a debate? If it's a race to the top, I'm all for it, but if we are racing the district down, there isn't, there isn't any part that I wanted that. Yep, and, and I know, Mr. Fritz, our conversations have been very good throughout the years, and I understand that you are trying to come at it from a good place, and yes, let's have this discussion. Race to the top is what we're all for, and, and I thank you for your, your commitment to the Brentwood community, because you are a lifelong resident of Brentwood. And, and I know that along with the board members, cabinet members, Mr. Lochner, you also want the best for our kids and our community, so thank you very much for that. Mr. Lochner, is that okay?
Uh, great.
Okay, all right. No questions, no comments, no concerns? All right, so I'm going to end this, like I said, I'm going to steal a line from Mauricio and.
Priscilla.
Priscilla, yeah. So with that being said, this is Robert Feliciano and Paula Moore signing off. God bless you all, I need a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Burgos, could I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Moore, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, so moved. Have a wonderful, wonderful night.